The hour will be 7:00 p.m. I'm about to call the Cranston City Council meeting to order. If everyone could take their seats. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. President.
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 President. Before we start off the evening, I'd like to acknowledge Representative Robert Nant, who's in the crowd tonight. Welcome, Representative Nant. Under public acknowledgements and commendations.
To the Congressman President.
Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands as one nation, united in this whole liberty and justice for all.
Sometimes I'm too organized. I follow the list of the letter. Councilman Plaskas.
Thank you, Council President Fina. We are gathered here this evening to honor a young man, Nicholas J. Bombardier, who I have had the distinct privilege to get to know over the past couple of years. He is a Boy Scout in Troop 66, who has obtained the rank of Eagle Scout. And I personally know how hard he worked on, not only going through all of the ranks before you can even start your Eagle project, but how hard he worked on his Eagle project itself. He retired U.S. flags, state flags, city flags, POW flags. He collected 1,496 flags, if my memory serves me. And we had a retirement ceremony at Camp Champlain. It was well-attended, and he was a great leader, and had all of the scouts there. So, we'd like to honor Nicholas on obtaining his rank of Eagle. Would you like to come up here? Come on out. I'm just gonna read the citation out loud. "State of Rhode Island and Providence Plantations, a Cranston City Council. Be it known to all that the Cranston City Council hereby issues a citation to Nicholas J. Bombardier of Troop 66, Garden City, on his achievement in making the rank of Eagle Scout. The entire council extends its sincerest congratulations and very best wishes on this memorable event, and expresses its hope in continuing good health and good fortune in all future in Denver's." Is that being said?
Before we go on to the next one, I would just ask anyone standing in the back if you could please fill in areas on the seats. Thank you very much. Councilman Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight we have a young athlete from Cranston East, representing his Honduran background, his Honduran community. And I'd like to recognize through the President, Thomas Avala, in the audience. Thomas, thank you so much for bringing this to my attention. And as we read the proclamation tonight, you'll see what a fine, outstanding man Gio is. I did have the chance to meet him a few years ago, before I retired from Cranston East. But as you listen to his proclamation and see all of the achievements that he's accomplished, Gio, I can probably see you sitting up here one of these days, being a future leader in Cranston. So with that, I'm gonna ask the city clerk to please read your proclamation.
Proclamation honoring Giovanni Canales and being recognized by the Association Honduriana of Rhode Island for his outstanding individual achievement in inter-scholastic and amateur athletics with a Hondurani dad during the round recognition of merit. Resolved that, whereas Hondurani dad celebrates the achievements and contributions of Honduran Americans to Rhode Island and the United States, and highlights the values of our community, while highlighting the rich heritage, history, and tradition of Honduras, while raising awareness of the Honduran-American immigrant community. Whereas Giovanni Canales was selected to the 2016 Providence Journal All-State Boys Soccer Division III First Team, whereas the Cranston School Committee formally congratulated and recognized Giovanni Canales for his outstanding accomplishments and for his exemplary leadership in schools and community. Whereas Giovanni Canales became the first player in history to reach the Revival Baseball in Inner Cities World Series III consecutive times during the 2015, 2016, and 2017 seasons. Giovanni Canales playing with the Boys and Girls Club of Rhode Island, U-14 All-Star Team at age 13, region champions' player at the RBI World Series 2015 in Texas. Whereas Giovanni Canales became the first player... Excuse me. Whereas Giovanni Canales was a player at the RBI World Series in Cincinnati in 2015, member of the Pawtucket RBI Junior Division All-Star Baseball Team, Major League Baseball's RBI in Inner Cities Northeast Regional Tournament, World Series in Texas. Whereas Giovanni Canales went 3-for-4 at the RBI World Series 2017 versus Florida, representing the Boys and Girls Club of Pawtucket. Whereas Giovanni Canales was named 2016 Providence Journal All-State Boys Soccer Division III First Team, and recognized by the Cranston City Council for his outstanding individual achievement in inter-scholastic athletics, and is named a member of the 2017 Providence Journal All-State Baseball Team Division I Central Second Team from Cranston High School East, Bolts. Whereas Giovanni Canales is the goalie and junior co-captain for the 2017 Rhode Island Inter-Scholastic League Division III State Champions Cranston High School East Boys Soccer Team. Giovanni Canales helped the Division III State Champions Cranston High School East Bolts Boys Soccer Team with nine saves, beat the St. Raphael 1-0, and now has another solid year in net. In 30 days, started for the Bolts, Canales has recorded 237 saves and posted nine shutouts for 15 career wins. Be it resolved with the Cranston City Council, we'd love to recognize this outstanding athlete for his contribution to his teams and to the sports of baseball and soccer. Giovanni Canales will receive a copy of this resolution, signed by the members of the Cranston City Council, dated the 27th day of November 2017 in Cranston, Rhode Island, signed by all the council members.
Beyond the public hearings, Councilwoman Favickio.
Thank you, Council President. Seeing that we have so many people in the audience, I would assume to speak. I'd like to offer a motion to suspend the rules to allow public comment in one session for docketed and undocumented items. And for the purpose, assuming that any discussion about these items that are not docketed tonight for hearing, the council cannot debate those under the open meetings laws, nor can the administration answer any questions about it. So, there may be some, you know, comments about things that are just being introduced or not here for debate. And because we cannot comment on those, I'd like to let everyone come in and speak early. But I'd like to limit it to two minutes apiece, just so that we're not here all night, especially on undocumented items that we can't even debate. So I'd offer that as a motion. So, I have a motion approved.
A second? I have a second. A motion to make public comment one session this evening to commence earlier in the evening for docketed and undocumented resolutions, knowing that anything that was brought up on undocumented matters in the first section could not be discussed by the council or the administration, because of the violation of means law and to limit speed to two minutes. Further discussions? Councilman Stachos.
I'd like to ask the county's solicitor, if a motion like that can change our rules, which call for four minutes speaking.
Are you suspending rules?
I think in general, for docketed items, we've allowed four minutes in the past. But for undocumented items, it appears isn't a real hard and fast four-minute rule. So, I guess the motion would be to amend that four-minute time to allow for two minutes.
Well, I guess I would ask Councilman Favickio to amend his proposal to two minutes for undocumented items and four minutes for docketed items.
That's fair. That's fine, Councilman. That's basically what the intent is, because obviously the other options... We don't really have to... I mean, we'd be going all night on undocumented items. So I'd rather spend the time on the docketed items. So that's fine. I'll amend my motion to suspend the rules to allow the public comment both for docketed and undocumented items. The limit would be two minutes for undocumented items and four minutes for docketed items.
A second? I have a motion and a second. Further discussions? Seeing them, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman?
Yes.
Councilman Hawkins?
Yes.
Councilman Spigels?
Yes.
Councilman Clay?
Yes.
Councilman Helf?
Yes.
Councilman Plaskas?
Yes.
Councilman Favickio?
Yes. 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 Start the list, and then we'll take speakers who are here, maybe not on the list. Gresham Bigel, 27th Avenue Drive. And she is speaking in ordinance 9-17-03, a docketed matter. Is that working? Did you push the button? Well, that wouldn't...
Okay. Good evening, President Fina and City Council members. Residents within the Garden City neighborhood support the progress and development in the surrounding areas, understanding that this is needed for the long-term prosperity of the city. However, we cannot put development ahead of quality of life for residents and traffic safety for our citizens. Tonight, you're considering passing an ordinance for the rezoning of areas of Chapel View, Plat 14, Lot 1, and 22 to C5 heavy industry with conditions. In Section 2 of this ordinance, the overview states that the sites are already developed. Lot 1 is developed, but Lot 22 isn't. There's more to this than simply changing the designation to already constructed areas. I'm again asking you to pause on passing this ordinance until there's a detailed review of all conditions allowed in the rezoning. We need to be proactive to ensure development at Chapel View doesn't create a negative impact on the quality of life for residents and the environment. To date, there's been little to no discussion addressing these two very important points. There are several specific points on all this ordinance that call for a second look prior to passing the zoning change. Retail large scale. This area is not large enough to safely accommodate the traffic for a big-box retailer and is not in keeping with the quality of retailers in the area. We were told in late July that there would be no big-box stores. Secondly, full-service fuel stations. At the plan meeting earlier this month, the commission questioned the reason for this condition, as there were environmental concerns. Mr. Coats explained that Tesla may be a tenant for future development and electric charging stations may be needed. Since electric vehicle charging station is in a low condition, there's no need for a full-service fuel station to be allowed in this ordinance, especially without reference to or discussion of environmental impact. Also needing a second look are arts and crafts manufacturing, as manufacturing of any kind belongs in an industrial area, not in a residential retail area. Check cashing, nightclubs, and commercial recreation. None of these are in keeping with the quality that currently exists at Chapel View and surrounding areas. Why, no one is questioning the Copy and Auto Group on their specific intentions for the development of this land. Traffic continues to be a major concern that hasn't been addressed with a specific plan. The condition within the ordinance only states that a certificate of occupancy won't be issued until traffic improvements are completed. We have serious concerns that development will be completed prior to traffic improvements. And being realistic, we all know that if a building is built and a tenant is at the ready, it's very likely that there will be an exception granted for the certificate of occupancy, regardless of the status of traffic improvements. There needs to be more specific language in the ordinance stating that any development cannot commence unless and until an approved traffic improvement plan is in place with a specific timeline. There are too many questions and not enough answers. We respectfully ask the City Council to postpone voting until there's a detailed review of the ordinance, amendments are made to the allowed conditions, there's clarification on use of this land with an environmental understanding and consideration to the quality of life for the residents, and that the ordinance includes specific timelines for traffic improvements before any further development commences. Thank you.
Thank you, Gresham. Pauline DeRosa, 98th Sepus Drive, Ordinance 9-17-03.
Good evening, President Fina, City Council members. I'd like to address the ordinance, number 917-03, Chapel View Boulevard, Plat 14, Lot 22, and the amended zone change from S1 Open Space to C5 Heavy Business and Industry. Lot 22 is located beneath Shaw's Market, west of Power Road. Lot 22 will be the location for a proposed big-box retailer. Although not specifically stated by the developer, it is likely to be a Costco wholesale warehouse. The naming of two intersections in Phase 2 to Costco West Dr. and Costco East Dr. seem to confirm that statement. In addition, these driveways, as they are called, will intersect with Sacanac Crossroad. Will these changes require additional traffic signals? How will they affect traffic flow, and exactly where on Sacanac would that be located? There needs to be explicit answers to these questions and concerns. In addition, New Costco is located 50 miles north in Avon, Massachusetts. A proposed business of this tenure in Chapel View will attract shoppers from all corners of Southern England and compound our current traffic changes. A portion of this expansion will include a parking garage and fueling station. This type of industrial development is not in keeping with the original plans that were submitted in 2008 for the first phase of Chapel View. The zone change to C5 Heavy Business is not conducive to the current look or feel of Chapel View or the surroundings at Chapel View. It will only compound traffic circulation. The rush to develop open space in Chapel View is very troubling, and we must be cognizant of the effects these types of businesses have on our communities with regard to traffic safety and environmental issues. We do not want to see the inclusion of a Costco wholesale warehouse in Chapel View development. We ask that ordinance number 917-03 be further amended by removing two entries from the Rangers Chart on Page 4 under the business heading. They would be Fuel Station Full Service and Retail Sale Large Scale, both of which are inappropriate for this development. How are the City Council going to refine vote to this zoning change without having, at the very least, a preliminary plan for Mr. Coats and the Copy and Auto Group, showing what their intentions are for controlling the traffic flow on the Sacanac Corridor, Pontiac Avenue, Route 37, and New London Avenue? We need to see details and plans for traffic mitigation prior to any further large-scale expansion. Mr. Coats has said he has been discussions with Rhode Island DOT to address traffic concerns. Have these discussions been productive in a way that would address the specific needs of the abiding communities? Safety issues in our communities need to be apparently concerned. Thank you.
Robert Santori Jr., 30 Eaton Road, Ordinance 91703. Good evening, Council members and Council President Fina. Thank you for your time this evening. I'm here to speak about the ordinance concerning the Chapel View area on time to docket. My first question before I stop speaking is, because I heard it mentioned earlier and I realized I haven't heard about it in the last month, is there an update about the traffic study that is supposed to be taking place at Sacanac Crossroad, in that area that was passed by the council three months ago? I'm just curious, because that will determine what I say next, so...
To the administration? Or Daniel Miller?
I can answer it if you want, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman Favickio.
Mr. Santori, I don't know if you were here last meeting, but we had arranged a meeting for November 30th, which the group said they could not attend. So, we left it up to Mr. Coats and the Garden City group. Mr. Coats is available. He's willing to present that. I've been briefed, but that's not... It's outside of my control right now. So whenever they get together, they'll have a presentation.
Okay. Well, I say that because as we hit the holiday season, as anyone here is aware who's driving around, the area that we're discussing this evening has obviously seen a lot more traffic flow in the last couple of weeks, and it's gonna probably really seem more so as we get into more in the holiday season. And my biggest concern while this still remains safety. I remember I first started coming to these meetings back in February because of the Garden City issue. And at that meeting, you pass the ordinance or whatever, and then a couple months later we come back and we say, we agree that the area has a lot of danger going on in terms of traffic, because we passed the ordinance to have a traffic study. And now we're having another vote tonight, and I have to agree with what we said before, in that there needs to be a solid plan in place. I understand that, you know, urban planning is not glamorous, it's not sexy. That's one of the most important things that this council does. And I think that in terms of having something concrete in place would be good, especially since, you know, we're getting to a point now where you're seeing Garden City going to another phase soon, because that building's gonna be done. Chapel View's gonna be another thing. And by the time, you know, these things are done at this point, we're looking at, when that time the traffic study could radically change. You know, you kinda see both Chapel View and Garden City keep going, 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 and that's great to a point, but after a certain while, it's gonna be more space over there, and it's gonna be overdeveloped. And I don't know if we're reaching that point now, you know, this could still land over there, but I think that a lot of residents could... Would argue that it is becoming overdeveloped. So, I'd just like to voice my support for the residents before me who said their concerns and hope to see this body do something about them in their future. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna clarify, Mr. President, Pauline DeRosa, you may.
During public hearings, the speaker can make statements, but I don't think they can pose questions to the City Council. They can pose a general question for us to get back with them at later on, but they can't... It was out of order, I held back, but for the future, they can't pose questions for us to answer during public hearing.
You know, Councilman Alcott, that happened once before, and I do remember Councilman Stachos telling me that we were allowed to answer questions, and we actually had the lawyers go around and ask, and the lawyers said during public comment that we could. So, I'm trying just to make sure I do what everybody says you want. We don't have to answer, but we can. There's no law that says we don't have to. And just another point of information, the matter before tonight, before Chapel View, is the rezoning of the currently developed area above, basically Chapel Restaurant Shaw's and that area above, not the zoning of the area below, just to clarify. Frank Zuccicchio. Name and address for the... You're talking about an undocumented item?
Yes. Frank Zuccicchio, and President Brown, Second Amendment Coalition. I live in Johnston, Rhode Island, and I'm speaking on the introduction for the resolution for the more guns in school. We should not support this bill, the resolution whatsoever. Do you know which current reality felony in Rhode Island to carry a firearm on school grounds without having a license? This exemption was put on the law in 1990 by our Attorney General, stating that in the event that there was a need for added security in our school systems, and we already have it in place in the law, that these people could be licensed and go on our school grounds. Since 1990, how many problems we had with this exemption? Zero. Not one. Not one single CCW holder has gone onto any school grounds and done anything wrong. So, we have 27 years of not a problem. So now you want to throw the resolution to do this. How many people will be affected by this? There are approximately 3,500 CCW holders in the state of Rhode Island. We have a population of 1.1 million people. Do the math. Four-tenths of... Less than four-tenths of 1% of the population are legally licensed to carry a firearm. These aren't criminals. This particular resolution is not aimed at making our schools safer, going after criminals. It's going after the licensed CCW holders, which for the last 27 years have not been your problem. Okay? The effect on this bill was put forward to the Speaker... Speaker of the... Not Speaker, I apologize. To the sponsor of this resolution last year at the House hearings on this. It was preferred that an retired police chief with even 30 years of experience would no longer be able to carry a firearm for his own personal protection if this resolution was to go forward. The sponsor of this bill amazingly said, it would be better off for everyone if the retired police chief left his firearm in the car and then went into the school. That would be safer for everyone. That is what this bill does. This bill does not go after law-abiding criminals. It only goes after law-abiding citizens. These types of resolutions have popped up after Sandy Hook. Sandy Hook was all in a gun-free zone. This type of failed resolution was one of the reasons Adam Lanza was able to go in and do what he did at Sandy Hook. After that point, Sandy Hook and most of school districts in Connecticut upped their security, added armed security. We're trying to prefer a resolution, putting forward one, to put gun-free zones in Cranston. Amazingly, the same gun-free zones that failed in Sandy Hook. If you look at the FBI reports, every single mass shooting in the United States, with the exception of two, was done in a gun-free zone. Now you want to put it in our K-12 classrooms and schools in Cranston? There is no added security in this resolution. None whatsoever. So, I think it's a huge mistake. In fact, our legislature, two years ago, passed a law to arm our campus police, so in the event that there's a problem, our campus police, our colleges and universities can actually respond to an active shooter quickly. All this resolution does is guarantee that if we had an active shooter in any school, absolutely guarantees that no ex-military, no ex-police officer, and no ex-police chief would be able to respond, because it would be illegal for them to carry a firearm on school grounds, even if they're licensed. This is why this resolution, I mean this bill, has failed for the last three years at the State House and hasn't got out of one committee, because it doesn't work. It makes things worse for security in schools, not better. Okay? What message are we sending to our K-12 students? You're on your own, and when you get to college, we make sure that our police officers are there to respond. This is a terrible bill. We should not introduce this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mike O'Neill. Mike O'Neil.
Good evening, this is Michael Moore from Rhode Island, on the First Amendment of Rhode Island, Second Amendment Coalition. Gun-free zones, thanks, Scioscia, covered a little bit of it. I'd like to describe a video that was on Facebook, this can describe a gun-free zone as best as possible that I've seen. If anyone remembers Groundhog Day, Groundhog Day was Bill Murray. So every day, the day would repeat, and he would relive the day. So this gentleman's running through town, and you could tell it was a sense of urgency. He goes into this building and finds his loved one deceased on the ground. So he took a five-by-eight sheet and put a firearm with a red circle on the line through it, put it on the outside of the building, repeats the day, running through town, urgency, gets inside to the building again, and his loved one's still deceased. Puts two larger signs on the outside of the building. Again, relives the day, running through town in an urgent manner, gets inside, his loved one's still passed. Four-by-eight sheets with the same signs. Runs through, and again, his loved one's deceased. My point is, gun-free zones, just because you need a gun-free zone does not do anything. It doesn't add protection, there's no study that says that it adds protection. If you look at the Orlando shooting, it was a gun-free nightclub, an officer was outside, he engaged with the shooter, the shooter went back into the club. Forty-five minutes it took the police department to get swat to go in, meanwhile, there was more lives lost. Imagine if there was a couple of people or one person inside the nightclub that was a concealed permit holder. The state of Rhode Island and the school departments cannot afford to add metal detectors, police officers at a large amount of rate to what we have now. They don't have, they don't have that kind of funds, the state of Rhode Island doesn't have that kind of funds. So we're not, the people pressing for this resolution are not giving any type of resolution as far as how they're going to actually accomplish it. Just make everything a gun-free zone, Johnny Philbin legislation, pat themselves on the back. So I guess a lot of time, Mr. President, you're all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Senior. That concludes my sign-up sheet. I assume there will be more people who want to speak, so again, would you guys come up one at a time? If you can, try to keep it under two minutes if it's an undocumented item, documented for, but if you're going to repeat something someone's already said, I'm more than happy to have you say, I agree with everything as previously stated about the topic and add some color to it, that way we can try to get everybody a chance to speak who wants to. Good evening, Suzanne.
Good evening. Susannah Rehman, 88th Lake Number, Cranston, Rhode Island. First of all, this is not a bill, this is a resolution, and it clearly is not going to stop a mad man from going into the school and in the rooms. I could use a metaphor, that when I had Senator Gallow put in legislation for the child safe zone, it was to keep pedophiles out of libraries, school zones. We know that it's not going to keep them out. What it basically is, is it adds time to sentencing for people like this when they are in such a zone. I, as a parent, don't feel comfortable having someone, and I've said this before, going into school other than police personnel. They are allowed under the laws that are passed in 40, I think it's 43 other states that have already passed this legislation. So it's not like we have to reinvent the wheel, there's good legislation that's out there, we don't have to design our own. So if we follow that, and I do like guns, I like to shoot, I don't want my rights taken away, however, this is about on-school grounds, that's all this is about. So I don't really understand what Mr. Scioscia, sorry, pronunciation, what the complaint is, why you need to have it here, but I also wanted to bring up that this bill, this resolution was before us, back in November, and then it was going to the Ordinance Committee, which it never made it, and there were reasons for it, I'm sure, and we're back here again. I need to know why we are not approving something like this. First, I don't understand why it went to the Ordinance Committee, a lot of people have asked about that, and then it was never heard, and now we're back here again. So I would like to hear my counsel being supportive of our school committee, and say, we know that we need legislation to go to the State House and have them devise some sort of bill that protects the state. You are only putting your yes vote on something that is going to protect people. You're not, you're not putting together a bill here in Cranston, we're just going forward, isn't that correct? Well, you can answer right now, if you don't want to. So that's what I'm asking for, is that you, the council, put a yes to this, because I think it's an important bill. I also wanted to just support Councilman Alcato, who had the resolution for banning the bump socks and the trigger pranks. I think that's excellent, and I think that's kind of a no-brainer. So thank you for your time.
Anyone else yet to speak? So it's time to come report. If you're ready, come on up. Name and address, the record, please.
Stephen Walker, 317, Bedmore Road, and Cranston. I'm here to speak against passing any resolution condoning this, this particular bill. As was stated before, it does absolutely nothing to prevent someone with ill will from entering school grounds to begin with. And honestly, all it does is one more, one more thing to chip away at the rights of gun owners. That's all, I just came here to offer my disapproval for the bill, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council members, Mr. President, thank you very much. Lisa Pagano from Carlisle Street in Garden City. I'm here again this year to speak on behalf of the No Guns in School Resolution that closes the loophole for concealed carry permit holders to bring guns to school buildings and on the grounds where school sports and other events are held. Many believe that a good guy with a gun can take down a bad guy with a gun, that's, that's the ongoing statement and belief. This is why many attempts to close this loophole has failed here. Our Cranston School Committee has voted three years in vote in support of this ban, our teachers support it, our police even support it. And I bet if you polled the parents on this, they would be in support as well, if they understood the nature of the loophole. Experience has shown us over the past several years that the good guy with the gun cannot stop a deranged killer until after the damage is already done. And yes, we know that most school shooters have had mental health issues and should never have had a weapon in the first place. But we also know that it's still pretty easy for someone to secure and maintain ownership of a weapon these days despite their history of violence, troubled mental health, and background checks. The mass shootings occurring almost weekly now show us that. You'll all recall, my brother Jimmy was murdered almost 10 years ago by a deranged guy who was granting an automatic concealed carry permit as he, after he retired from the police department. A guy who was, and I say that not to exploit my brother's murder or my brother, but to illustrate that what is possible in our small community that we also love. The guy was employed by the Providence Police Department to improve quality of life, resolve problems, preserve the peace, protect human rights, and apprehend criminals consistent with the law. Clearly, this guy was not upholding his responsibilities as a cop on the day he fired three shots at my brother in the middle of a cul-de-sac where many young children were playing ball. Clearly, he suffered, suffered mental instability. Or maybe he was just evil. Either way, he had a permit and an arsenal of weapons and ammo that he couldn't wait to use as soon as he got a little frustrated. So in some cases, even the good guys with the guns can suffer mental illness. Despite using their brother to gun violence, I'm a Second Amendment supporter. I believe in the Second Amendment. But I'm not naive. I know there are many loose cannons out there with access to guns and the willingness to use them in any environment. I also know that we're not going to sell them until health crisis overnight, that will take some time. So why not take control over what we can do now to ensure our kids' safety? Why not remove the guns from the equation where kids learn, play, socialize, gain confidence, and build character? It would be easy to throw up our hands and say okay to the status quo, but, but do we really want to create a Wild West environment at school or on a ball field or at a dance? My son's a freshman in high school here. I send him off to school knowing what I know to be possible, having seen it firsthand. I pray every day he will be safe at school. I would feel much safer knowing that he is in a gun-free zone at school and events. We should leave the safety of our students to the capable security and resource officers trained to react appropriately in a dangerous shooter situation. Thank you.
Good evening, name and address, the record.
Jessica Lozner, 107, Betsy Williams Drive, in Cranston, Rhode Island.
Good evening.
I'd like us to at least get to a vote, however you decide to vote. This has been going on year after year after year. I've lived in the city for 31 years, and this particular resolution in many forms has come up, and you need to be on the record at this point. I've seen council members come and go and come and go, and it's time to take a stand one way or the other. That's one thing. I work in the public library at the William Hall Library, where you can also bring a loaded gun on our grounds. I can tell you, I've been here every, for a long time, 12, 13 years. There is a security guard who does not have a gun. We have no possible defense. We are in an open room, there is one room with a door and two bathrooms. If somebody were to come in, there would be, there's little children and senior citizens, basically, and the people that work there, and anything could happen, and I do not feel safe. I support a No Guns in Schools Resolution, and I support this, a Gun-Free Zone. I think it's ridiculous, scenario after scenario, everybody has this hypothetical idea that they could be the hero, that there's some good guy with a gun that's just going to happen to be there, that's just going to happen to be a trained shooter, that's just going to happen to be at the right place at the right time and defend the innocent people who are harmed and traumatized and sometimes killed. And that is very unlikely, because it's, even when there is a good guy with a gun, often they are so good and so responsible that they're afraid of shooting an innocent bystander, which is a reasonable thing to think. So please, at the very least, do your job, discuss this amongst yourselves, and take a vote and be on the record. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Ramsey Davis, I live at 58 Ferguson Avenue in Cranston, I've lived there with my wife since the mid-1980s. My son, his wife, and our only grandchild live in the Edward section, and my grandchild will be going to road school in next September, and that's the reason I'm here, for my grandchild. I'm wearing this today because I'm a retired United States Marine Corps veteran of the Vietnam War, and I want to make that point, because I carried an M16, and I carried a fire, a handgun for a year in Vietnam. I know the capability of those weapons, I've been trained extensively on those weapons. After leaving the service, I went to college and got a degree in education, and have had a program for emotionally disturbed, behavior-disordered students at the junior high level. Now, we all know junior high can be a difficult age group. I happen to have one student that was particularly difficult, and nobody was making any progress, including myself. And this guidance counselor called the two of us into his office from the building, closed the door, and proceeded to pull a handgun out of his desk drawer and waved it around in a dangerous, threatening manner to this student, trying to make a point, I guess the point was that power pays. I, of course, with my background, was wondering if I was going to be lying in the next five minutes. What that student learned was that the power of a handgun pays. You have a handgun, you have power. What the rest of the school learned was that we had a guidance counselor with a handgun in his desk drawer. That guidance counselor had a concealed carry permit. That is not the lesson we want to teach our children in our schools. I assume most of you know that the Cranston School Department has a National Recognized Program called ALICE. ALICE stands for Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, and Evacuate. This program is taught by the Cranston Police Department. They have been trained in teaching this program to our school staff, our school students, our school faculty. All members of the school department undergo this training, this ALICE training, you can look it up online, there's extensive information about that training. We have school resource officers in our schools, they're armed and they're trained. We have the Cranston Police Department that is highly trained in dealing with situations having to do with firearms in schools. We don't need third-party, with a handgun, a concealed carry permit, who knows what training they're under. I think the important point is that we have the students and the faculty and staff trained in this ALICE program, you have a concealed carry permit person in the building not knowing what training these folks have been under. We don't need that in our schools. This is, this is really a, a safety issue, not a gun issue. As the previous speaker mentioned, this has to do with the safety of our children, and that really is probably one of the most important criteria for this, for this body, is to protect the safety of our children and our community. Having concealed carry permit people in our schools is a safety issue, it's not a gun issue. If this resolution is not, if this legislation is not passed at the state level, that would mean that the, and the federal legislation that is attempting to go through right now at the federal level is passed, there's a good chance that that will happen, that means that 16.3 million concealed carry permit holders, 16.3 nationally, will be able to come to our schools, our sporting events, our activities, with a concealed carry and not have to inform anybody that they have, that they have a weapon moving. I ask you, I just, I did want to point out that the current legislation, I'm counter to what one of the outer-city lobbyists mentioned, the current legislation now allows retired police officers to carry a concealed weapon on, to the school grounds, if that legislation is passed. I have a few other points that if this hopefully does come up for discussion, and I ask that you consider this resolution, and as was previously pointed out, it's only a resolution, I'm just asking you to talk about it, discuss it, and, and make a vote, and possibly pass on up to, up to the state level. Again, this is a safety issue, not a gun issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. I've been letting everybody go for about three minutes, so might kind of pick up the gab, we're already at three, so if we can, want to get as many people in to speak as possible, so try to, try to keep it succinct if you can. Good evening, Swodrick.
Good evening, Council Chairman and Council Members. Thank you. You know, I've spoken to this issue a number of times before.
Name and address, the record officially.
Okay. Thomas Swodrick, 11 Hall Place, Cranston, Rhode Island.
Could you speak up, sorry, I can't have a double hearing.
I'm available here, I search my wife. You know, I'm very proud of being part of the organization, the Rhode Island Coalition Against Gun Violence, but I also feel like wearing this shirt separates us into tribes. I don't want to be against the yellow shirts, against the orange shirts. This is not what this is about, it's not tribal warfare, it's not feel-good resolution either. This is about children. This is about your children, your grandchildren. We always talk about mass murders, where most accidents with guns happen because of accidents, and because humans are humans, they make mistakes, they leave their guns in inappropriate places, they drop them in restrooms and injure themselves, they leave them on buses, and I don't care what the Second Amendment says, those 3,500 people are human beings. human beings. They make as many mistakes as any other human being does. And because you're a concealed weapons permit holder, it doesn't mean that you don't have human problems. Since oh seven, twenty-three of the mass murders were committed by concealed carry permit holders, more than any other group, other than domestic violence. There's no immunity because you have this license or this permit. It's not about feel-good, it's about prevention. Ramsey and other speakers are right. This is a public safety issue. This is a child's safety issue. This respects the wishes and desires of parents, of grandparents. A few moments ago, you talked about the Chapel Hill thing and we rely on experts to give you the information as to whether you're going to make a decision about traffic studies, about land use. The school committee, the experts that monitor the school and deal with the school every day for the last few years have voted for this. Teachers are the professionals have voted for this. The principals' associations, the people that have to run their organization are for this. They want to know if there's someone in that building carrying a gun. They have a huge responsibility and we're denying them that right. Why, as politicians, do you reject professionals' opinions on this? Why do you reject the Police Chiefs Association? Why do you reject all the professionals who say that this is the wrong thing? This is taking a risk, it's putting our children in harm's way. You need to do your job. You need to take a vote on this. Your job is to support the citizens' wishes. You won't even take a vote on this. That is not supporting wishes, that's showing a lack of courage. And the thing we need most in this world right now is for people to have courage and to stand up and be on record for what their values are and what they care about and what you're committed to. Thank you. Thank you, Stojak.
Good evening, name and address to record.
Good evening, Dana Holmgren, one sixty-one Front Crest Avenue, Cranston. Thank you, members of the City Council. As a former school nurse, I would, I want to go on record as being in favor of the no guns in schools resolution. I agree with the speakers who've spoken previously that this is an issue about our children's health and safety and I agree that the City Council members need to go on record in terms of voting on this resolution. Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, my name is Susan Hodgson. I live at one zero eight Betsy Williams Drive in Cranston. So I'm coming to speak tonight as a teacher in the classroom. I taught for about twelve years in the Cranston Public Schools at Bain Middle School, Stadium Elementary, Rhodes Elementary, and Edward Highland. And as someone who's worked with that age group kindergarten all the way up, I can tell you there's no concealed anything in elementary school. Kids will find everything in your desk drawer, they're loving and innocent and they'll come up and hug you and I am worried about accidents with the best of intentions for help, I understand that intention, but I also worry about accidents that might happen with concealed carry permits on school grounds. And the odd thing is that nobody knows, nobody has to know. If you go to an airport, you can't do that. If you go to the State House, you can't do that. Why can, why are those places safer to work than where I work? So, thank you.
Anyone else to speak?
Good evening, name and address to record, please. My name is Jack Peters. I live in Mount Fourteen Shore Road in Riverside, Rhode Island, skip across the bay. I was around in nineteen ninety when this was instituted, okay? A lot of people have short-term memories. In nineteen eighty-six, Stockton, California happened. That was a mass shooting on school grounds. Nineteen eighty-seven, nineteen eighty-nine. Our Attorney General back in nineteen ninety did not want the same incident to happen here in Rhode Island that it happened in Texas, Oregon, and California. So, we got a program together to train some teachers how to use a firearm, as well as how to use a fire extinguisher, believe it or not, as a defensive weapon. We did this with the intent of saving children's lives. That's what this whole program was about then and should be now. We need people in the schools that will react and react properly when an incident happens. And we have been lucky in Rhode Island because there's been a few incidences that they never made the paper. And a good guy with a gun and a good teacher or administrator with a gun actually stopped events. Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address to record.
Melissa Jenkins, one thirty-five Arnold Avenue, Cranston. I want to remind you all that we're coming up on the fifth anniversary of Sandy Hook. After the tragedy in Sandy Hook, a lot of school systems decided it would be a good idea to train some teachers, to have some responders ready with concealed weapons so that the good guy could take out the bad guy. In fact, that's not what happened. They trained teachers, teachers took guns into schools, and accidents involving the guns increased. So there were no incidents where the teachers used the guns effectively to take out the bad guy. Instead, they accidentally injured themselves or someone else was injured as a result of their good intentions. So while the idea of training teachers is good, the outcome is bad. Accidents involving guns are a real problem and that's why children and guns simply don't belong in the same place. It's not a Second Amendment issue, it's not a gun issue. Nobody's taking gun rights away. It's a simple matter of guns belong in a safe place. Children belong in a different safe place. Guns don't belong in schools. And we need to start the conversation here. We need to go on record and have a vote on this issue. It's way past time. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Michael Denon, twenty-two Duchess Drive, Cranston. I just want to back up the statement that my fellow gun supporters hit me a little earlier, but what I wanted to point out is we're not asking to bring guns into the school. We're asking and we're pointing out the fact that this has been going on for twenty-plus years. We have a track record and a history of success. This failure of guns in the school and people afraid that bad things are gonna happen, that's looking at what might happen. We only have a proven track record that what we are doing today is working. Why are you trying to fix something that's not broken?
Thank you, anyone else? There being none, that's actually the meaning of the note, as you want. Come on.
Sorry, I absolutely did not come here prepared to speak. I have a grandson who's at Cranston West. My name is Dana Pickett, sixty-five Boone Street in North Kingston.
Could you speak into the mic, I can't hear you.
Sorry, very short. I'm not quite sure why this is even an issue, children, guns don't belong together. It's just not a good idea to have guns in a place where accidents drop in, leaving them in a coat, leaving them in a locker, leaving them anywhere where children can have access to them or when accidents can happen. I don't understand why anybody thinks that having guns in schools is a good idea. I don't think any teacher wants to see parents coming in for conferences packing a gun or a PTA meeting, people having guns, or as someone else mentioned, school events where tempers off and flare. It just doesn't seem like a good idea to me. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Unfortunately, the meeting is now closed. We'll move on with the business of the evening. Odds to resolutions, there are no reso... Oh, I'm sorry. Come on up. I will open public comment for more speaker. Two minutes, because we're about ten.
Well, there's something on the docket and it's not on the docket, so do I get six minutes? Basically, I'm here to thank you all.
Name and address to record. Name and address to record, the clerk shall make it.
My name is Greg Moka and I'm here representing Sandra Moore, who is the president of the Cranston Historical Society. I live at the Governor Sprague Mansion, thirteen fifty-one Cranston Street, Cranston. Okay? But I'm here on Sandra's behalf to thank all of you, especially Paul Kittle, who's on our, who's a member of the Cranston Historical Society, and many of you who attended the unveiling of the Roth Square Veterans Monument cannons. Two of the three have been returned back to Cranston. And it was a nice event and I think it really hit home how all of you stepped forward and did your best to help recognize the service of Cranston veterans. However, and this is the other part that's not on the docket, I guess, returning to the cannons is really phase one. Really, what you need to consider is what to do with the Roth Square Veterans Monument. The Roth Square Veterans Monument was built, of course, in early nineteen twenties and it was intended by veterans of the Civil War, Spanish-American War, World War One, and carried on through all of the conflicts and wars since then to honor and respect our veterans. It's across the street from the school. They did that on purpose to teach children, future generations, the importance of serving our country honorably. The, Robin is sitting over there and I'd like to thank her for all her efforts as well, but Paul, I've known Paul for a long time and he soaked his teeth into this and really helped contact our others and I know he discussed all of these matters with you as well. But the Roth Square Monument is still there. Keep in mind, Cranston, when the cannons were removed, the cannon that's on the monument now is a French Pack seventy-five that was, a World War II cannon was put there to honor Cranston World War II veterans of Auburn Post. The problem with that is, is of the sixty million American World War II veterans, not one in the Pacific Theater, the European Theater, or here stateside ever served on or fired a French Pack seventy-five. It does not represent Cranston World War II veterans. So I mentioned to Paul, why don't you, why don't you consider this? Contact Cranston East, Cranston West, Auburn Post, General Centracchio, the National Guard, and come up with a project to do something positive with the Roth Square Monument that actually says what the veterans said in the nineteen twenties to honor and respect. Winston Churchill once said, "The farther back you're willing to look, the farther ahead you'll be able to see more clearly and that you know how to navigate your way best from the present into the future." This is what that monument means. It's what the cannons that are now in the carriage house at the Governor Sprague Mansion, that's what that means. And they will be there for all of you and the people of Cranston to see anytime you want. And, but they can't go back on the monument, so what do you do? Maybe contact the National Guard, the Paul King Foundry, Keith Langton, Graham at the Paul, uh, Chingy Foundation and do something positive with that monument involving the students of both high schools. That's my message to you. And again, Paul, thank you for all your effort. You too, President DeFina and Robin, Carlos, and Mary Fong, everybody, thank you for what you've done so far for the Roth Square Monument with veterans of Cranston.
Thank you, sir. Ron, are you good? Do you want to take a five-minute break? Can you just check in? I'll take it. Okay, moving on, we have no resolution before us this evening. We'll move on to report of committees. Finance Committee, Council Bush President, Favecchio.
Thank you, Council President. First we had on the Finance Committee, ten dash seventeen dash oh one, ordinance ratifying the school committee's collective bargaining agreement with the National Association of Government Employees Local Route Fifty-three Custodian Unit. This is for the term July one, twenty seventeen to June thirty, twenty twenty. Introduced pursuant to charter section eleven point zero two point one. It passed unanimously at committee, agreed its passage tonight.
Motion approved. So moves, have a motion, go a second.
Second.
Under discussion, seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Next, we have ten dash seventeen dash zero two, this ordinance ratifies the school committee's collective bargaining agreement with Rhode Island Council ninety-four, AFL-CIL on behalf of Cranston Public School Employees Local Twenty Forty-four, Secretaries Unit, July one, twenty seventeen to June thirty, twenty twenty. Introduced pursuant to the same charter section eleven point zero two point one. This also passed unanimously, agreed its passage tonight. Motion approved. Second. I have motion approved, go a second. Second. There being no further discussion, or any discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Next, we have resolution authorizing motor vehicle tax abatements. This also passing unanimously at committee. Is there motion approved?
Motion to approve.
Second. Second motion, a second. Under discussion, seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Next, we have, where is it? Resolution authorizing tangible tax abatements. There's only one on there that was approved unanimously as well. Words passage. I have motion approved, go a second.
Second.
I have motion, a second. Under discussion, seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 And lastly, we have the tax interest waiver approvals. They will also pass unanimously, agreed its passage tonight.
Okay, motion approved.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion, go a second.
Second.
Can you read it, go a second.
Yes.
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 I close with the business of the Finance Committee, Ordinance Committee, Councilman, Council Madre, Papalovskas.
Good evening, Mr. Council President. We have in front of us this evening, nine dash seventeen oh three, ordinance in the moment of chapter seventeen of the Code of Sigil of Cranston, two thousand and five, entitled zoning, change of zone, Chapelview Boulevard as amended in committee, which I believe passed unanimous.
Is there any motion approved? Motion approved. I have motion, go a second. A second. Under discussion, if anyone has any questions, the Capitol Corporation is here to answer them, but counsel in waiting.
Only question brought up by some of the speakers earlier, the traffic study. I think that's the big question that we all have. Are we approving something without a traffic study in place?
Are we approving something without a traffic study in place? I think we need a traffic study to see the impact of any new development would occur at Chapel View before we okay this particular ordinance. I'd like to make an amendment, a motion, I should say, to continue this until the traffic study is completed. Now put down the phone, a motion.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Under discussion, Council Vice President Favecchio.
Thank you, Council President. Well, to address Councilman Lanny's issue, first of all, this does not deal with the next section of Chapel View. This only deals with the existing developed area. And I don't think we heard from the Copinato Group again tonight as to— There's only one issue that I think that was brought up in terms of part of the land behind Shores, that that's not developed, and that could have a big box store. I think that was the only real question that was asked tonight that might be affected by this. Other than that, this does not involve the next phase of Chapel View. So 90% of this parcel, this piece is already built. I don't see how that's going to make a difference. The traffic plans have been—there has been extensive work done by the Copinato Group, and I believe they met with the state, they've met with the city, and they're going to present that to the residents long before the fountains, so-called fountains aspect of this is going to be heard. So we are concerned about the traffic issues, but I really don't think that those traffic concerns really involve this piece of this. This is only a very limited piece to this development. You know, we could ask Mr. Coats or some one of the engineers to address this, or the administration if they would like to weigh in. But I don't see where this part of it really needs to have that kind of continuance.
And I would just—I would want to echo Councilman Favecchio's position on this or his take on it. As I understand this, the—there was always a traffic study for any major development in Chapel View that goes on. There is a commitment right now for a traffic study in Sakhanasit and Pontiac, but that's already committed to moving forward. That's going to happen, and they only have to do so to shadow a study where a dependent reviewer does it as well. So there are technical balances in place. Anything that happens still has to go into a site plan review and has to go through the whole planning process. So there absolutely the traffic comes in as a top priority for administration, as well as I'm sure all of you and neighbors. That's—for me, one of the most critical aspects of what's going to happen inside of that Chapel View is what that can do to impact the outside. The commitments and the requirements that Copinato and the state have engaged in to ensure that those traffic studies are done is part and parcel of why we need to stay in this order of this. Because that is—the stuff for us, there's a benefit to that. It just doesn't fix when the Copinato puts one more building in their map. Sakhanasit, Pontiac, you won't have to get fixed. At this point, the funding for that study is actually going to come as a result of developing Copinato's Boston Chapel View.
Councilman Lanny. I'm glad you explained it to me and the audience also, because I was under the impression that the traffic studies were for the entire parcel, not this little section behind Shores market.
We didn't traffic study, I believe I've heard of this, Sakhanasit and Pontiac. But I would defer to Mr. Coats, who's engaged in the state office. But between the state and Chapel View and council?
If I may come—
May I?
Yeah, it's actually very extensive. The traffic view is actually four intersections and not just Sakhanasit. It's London. There are basically like four intersections or four specific areas that are involved in the ordinance.
London.
New London, two areas on New London Avenue, London and the Shannica Valley Parkway, London as the exit ramp, 337, and Pontiac, and Sakhanasit and Pontiac. So there are four distinct areas that are involved. But they—again, those things are not what's on the agenda tonight. This area, and you can ask the question, I guess, of Mr. Coats as far as whether that area behind Shores, I don't believe that that's got—it has any—there's any use of that for a big box store. I think it's all redlands, if I may.
I just want to add one thing, if I could through with you.
May I?
For what I understand and reading the ordinances before the council tonight, it's more of a change in form for how the Copinato Group obtains its approvals more than what it can do at the site. They no longer want to be bound by this NDP model that they're in, and now they want to go under existing codes and approvals so they don't have to go through this cumbersome process for the little changes that they had to experience under the NDP. So that's all it is. I know everyone is concerned about traffic and development, but this really is a formal assumption, I believe.
Thank you, Attorney. Councilman Lanny.
I have to finish one question of this. Do you have any idea when the traffic study will be completed? I'll accept any kind of rough estimate. This year?
Mr. Coats, do you have an estimate of when you will have the traffic studies completed between the state?
Councilman Lanny, is it rather dressed him directly, Mr. Chairman or President? So the initial traffic studies have all been completed. We've been given a list of intersections to study. That was approved in the master plan approved for the fountains at Chapel View. So the fountains at Chapel View is not on the agenda tonight. The only thing is on—is—is for Chapel View. Chapel View currently has an NPD zoning. We've worked with you, Councilman Lanny, many, many, many times on that. And that makes us happy to come back before the city council. An error in the planning department years ago had part of the roads and part of the development being zoned open space because it formerly was state-owned property, but it's zoned NPD. And so that goes all the way to 37. So it's to clarify an error. And so that's why the planning staff re-did this, recommended this rezone. In fact, they contacted us several times, pushing it to get their records cleaned up. So the NPD and the C5, we get rid of the NPD mechanism and we add a C5. However, in the C5, I know you and I have spoken on traffic many times. I know you're great concern for the neighborhood and to protect it. And so the C5 zoning is called C5 with conditions. One of the conditions on there is that if we increase traffic at Chapel View with any more development for its continuing life, that we have to do traffic studies. And if the traffic studies show that mitigation is required, then we also have to do the mitigation. So it does exactly what a couple of the speakers talked about. But they're talking about the development on a separate lots, on separate pieces of property. This is just zoning this. This is exactly what the council just completed with Garden City. So it's a rezone, one consistent zone for Garden City. So it's also what many of you sat on the council doing, did, is we rezoned the 100 Sakhanasit, the fountains, and then this will all be one consistent zone. As far as the traffic study, the traffic study additional counts are being done through right now this season because you want to know what the worst condition is, not the best. And so they're being done through this season, and then they're going to be finished up from January and February. We have offered to meet with the leaders of the community group or neighborhood association on traffic. I think that they're going to be able to get their times together. We'll meet with them sometime in mid-December. And then with a larger group, we're going to start having neighborhood groups meetings so people can come and see that. We're going to invite the council, but it won't be a council meeting. And we'll do that over the next several months before any development proposals are, again, come back before the planning board. So it's sort of an orderly process. The first things are taken into concern, all the concerns, and then we finish that up. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Councilman Stankos.
Yes, my question, I don't know if this is for Councilman Favecchio or the administration. The—you know, I'm also concerned about traffic, but I'm also concerned about the traffic study and what the result of that may be. Let's say there's a traffic study with a recommendation, and this count—and this—what's before us tonight passes, and there's a traffic study done, and we don't like the traffic study. The residents don't like it. They think it's—the whole situation is going to be a problem. What—if this passes tonight, what leverage does the city council have to control this large redevelopment?
I can answer that.
Councilman Favecchio.
I can answer that. Well, the fountains would have to come back to us. This does not affect any new, any development, that future development with that bigger parcel that we're talking about. So I think we could—correct me if I'm wrong from the administration, but I think we could prevent that from going forward. It has—that is not before us tonight at this point in time.
I thought that we—that the council granted a pretty wide-ranging zone change for that other parcel.
We did, but there's still many, many facets of approval that are necessary, so I'm—
Yeah, but I don't think that comes before this council. That's my concern.
Well, I'll leave it to—
Before you speak, we're running dangerously close on something here. Attorney Kershaw, moment.
I just wanted to say, this has nothing to do with the future development. Some people call for fountains. This has nothing to do with that tonight. So this is not on the agenda. This ordinance has everything to do with Chapel View as we know it today. So speculating about what happens on a different ordinance doesn't really help us on what we have constructed today and what the uses of that construction could be. I think that's all we're talking about.
Well, Councilman Lanny has made a motion to postpone or to continue because he's concerned about traffic. And Councilman Favecchio is saying, essentially, there's traffic studies. And my concern is that, you know, whether there's studies or there aren't studies, they may be what this council considers and the residents consider to be a traffic problem. So my opinion, and I'm—that's why I asked this question, and I think I got the answer, is that if we approve this now without really knowing what's going to happen at that whole site, and as Mr. Coats said, it's all kind of tied together, and it's—all these pieces are tied together, that we don't have any—we, the council, don't have any avenue for affecting the traffic or the development on that site, because they'll have this very broad, what I would call basically blank-check zoning approval without us knowing anything about the traffic consequences. So that's why, unless I can be—get some information and I'm mistaken, I would support the continuation so we can see how this whole thing is fleshing out and we can make a decision on what is best for that whole area.
Any other questions about—Councilman Arquette?
Thank you, Council President. We realize we're discussing council committees and then asking for a little leeway.
I haven't given a little bit, so I'm going to allow it to—
My concern is the traffic also. The residents expressed that. I'm wondering, was this presented before the planning board?
It was. I can answer that. It was.
And did the planning board vote in favor of the warning? It, uh, all the way. So there was one negative vote on the planning board. Is that correct, Mr. Coats?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. This now before the zoning board to the chair, Mr. Coats? Was it before the zoning board?
The NPD ordinance doesn't allow any zoning board action.
So it wasn't before the zoning—
It's never before the zoning board, counselor.
So from the planning board to the council, correct?
Yes, sir.
And as of now, there hasn't been an extensive traffic study done in here, correct?
Oh, no, that's 100% incorrect, because you sat on the council, you were on the council, the other ones were just moving coming along. But the traffic studies are this thick. It's called Chapel View. So there's some confusion, right? So when you just rezoned Garden City, there were no traffic studies. It just got rezoned. We're doing the same thing, that the same everybody here just voted on a Chapel or a Garden City, which is to rezone how their rules are going forward. The thing before you also adds in, that's not in the Garden City requirement, that if we do anything with traffic generation, I've got to do traffic mitigation. Garden City doesn't have that. We are adding that in. So this is Chapel View. It's not what the confusion is. We hear the neighbors. We want to sit with them. We've got a magnificent project coming up. Has nothing to do with this. This is changing how Chapel View— Okay, so 153 meetings before the Historic District Commission. Historic District Commission, when we put up the Orange Theory signage, they had to approve Orange Theory signage on a brand-new building. It used to be at Thad's Montana Grill, right? That's new construction. But the way the ordinance is written, every sign on every building, every color, everything has to get approved by them. Every planting, all of it. So what the ordinance before you says is now the Historic District Commission only reviews the historic tree, the three historic dormitories, the chapel, and a stone wall, the things that are historic. Even the state historic doesn't want to see all the rest of this stuff. But for the chapel, the state historic wants to continue to see that. So it cleans up. This is just a mechanism. Traffic is being brought in because neighbors are concerned about the next project. There's nothing being built on this project. This is Chapel View. And it changes the zoning to C5 to match everything else that's around it. It eliminates a spot zone, in effect. So an NPD is something that no one knew how cumbersome it was going to work. The Historic District Commission, people had—they couldn't get—I don't know. I've had 15 meetings where they couldn't get it warm, and so you've got to go to the next meeting. Starbucks can't get signage. Got to go to the next meeting. Garden City doesn't have that. Nobody else in the city has that. So this mechanism has been worked out for many, 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 many months by the planning staff, and it's consistent exactly with what the same vote was for Chap—for Garden City.
Thank you for your rapid oration. Mr. Coats, so your answer was then I was incorrect and there has been an extensive traffic study on this—
Yes, sir.
Jewish. That's your answer.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Lanny?
All right, just a follow-up on that. When we were in Garden City, we allowed the planning commission to make any future decisions concerning—considering, concerning, I should say, development in Garden City. Is this exactly the same procedure now?
Yes.
So Chapel View, if there's any changes in the future, it'll go before the planning commission for their okay. Yes, say okay. If it does not come to the city council, so we have no vote on this whatsoever in the future concerning any changes that are approved by the planning commission.
Only on Chapel View. But nothing to do with the training school, nothing to do with the Citizens Bank property. They're not before you. That's correct. That is correct.
All right, and so in other words, this council is continuing to give away its authority as a council to represent the people out there by having it going before a planning commission who are not made up of elected officials to make the decisions for the city of Cranston.
Councilman Arquette?
Thank you, President Fivencio. I don't see any reason to put Councilman Lanny's amendment to continue if most prefer it's out of our hands. I think that's a dangerous road to travel. I think we need to take some caution here and make sure the traffic study comes, of course, in positive manner. I'll be supporting Councilman Lanny's amendment.
Anybody else? Councilman Papaloskas?
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I just have a question now. If there are any changes made at Chapel View, Mr. Coats, does it—do you come to the city council now as a part of the Historic Commission?
Yes, we do come before the council now on any changes at Chapel View.
Okay.
And that's part of that. But that's not normal zoning. That's not in the statewide enabling act for zoning. A planning board has its proper role. A zoning board has its proper role. They have no role on Chapel View, the zoning board doesn't. The NPD does not allow the zoning board to function on that property.
But there's a failsafe in the ordinance for any future building that you would mitigate the tra, any increased traffic?
That is correct. Unlike what just got passed for Garden City, there is for Chapel View a failsafe, which we agreed to, which says if we increase traffic above a threshold, then at that point a traffic study has to be done and any mitigation required under the traffic that is called for.
Okay. One more question. This is just the area where the historic buildings were?
This is just the area called Chapel View. Nothing to do with all that area below shaws, all that parking lot area, all that down the hill.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. One more question, one more quick question. Okay, Councilman Fadkia?
One more quick question, sorry, Council President. To the chair, to Mr. Kershaw. If we did nothing, what would Copinato Properties be able to do?
If you did nothing, they'd be stuck with the NPD model, which I think they're saying is more cumbersome to navigate through. They might be restricted on the type of tenants that they would be able to attract. I don't really think that, you know, right now, what they have there, to my eyes, and I'm not a builder, but to my eyes, it looks premature.
Yeah, that's what they said. What can possibly be built in there anyway?
I mean, I don't, I can't, you know, I can't look into the future, but it looks like those buildings that they have there are there to stay. So I wouldn't anticipate any new structure coming up anywhere large in that parking lot or something. I mean, that wouldn't, it would give them more flexibility, I think, to attract tenants, not to go through the Historic District Commission every time someone wants to put a sign or something that's relevant to what our purposes are. The buildings' heights aren't going to change. I mean, you know, all these, the same things we had before are going to be there.
So nothing could, I don't know how much could be built on, that's I guess my question. If there's nothing that can be built on, then what are we arguing about? I don't know if Mr. Coates has any comment on that.
Councilman Stychos?
Well, of course, there's things that could be built on. Just like they built the current buildings, they just have to go through some kind of regulatory approval. But I mean, they want to tear down the Shaw's building, they could go ask, would that be tear down, if there's some, that a crossco go there, or that a hotel, or a hospital, or, you know, all the things on this list. And we wouldn't have any say over it.
Any ordinance presented to the council, you do have a land use allocation chart, which is the uses that Copinato will permit in the ordinance, the uses that they let.
What's proposed?
Yeah, so on, in section three, in the conditions section, there are things that can go, there are things that cannot. So it's pretty easy to figure out.
If everybody's done, I'm going to ask the expert in the room a couple of questions. Deputy Director? If you could just give us the opinion of the planning board on this matter?
Okay, so this ordinance has been in process for a long time. The planning commission recommended approval to the city council on this. It's still the fact that the ordinance as it's, as it's currently structured, has run its course. It's fully developed site. We feel that the continued need to bring advocates for everything that go on within the bounds, the wall, the new buildings, the old buildings, to the Historic District Commission is, again, is really run its course where it's, it's not effective anymore. Historically reviewing Starbucks drive-through, you know, historically reviewing Tads Montana Grill sites, things like that. The staff has been supportive of this idea for several years, that its time has come. The other problem with the existing zone is that it's hyper-specific. When I say that, every building, every floor, every use has a very specific prescription. So if there's any kind of variance between what they had asked for in 1998, they had to come back to the city council to do amendments. I think we did about nine or 10 major amendments and at least 10 or 15 minor amendments, which again is, it became ridiculous. It just became ridiculous. No other site within the city had to deal with this level of bureaucracy and this level of regulation anywhere. I don't know if any project anywhere in the state has had to deal with bureaucracy like this. So now that we're at a build out of the site, it's time to rethink where we were going with this. In addition to what we've already done with the fountains and the citizens' site, we're looking to unify the zones. So.
Second question. Do you think there will be more protection whether going through zoning or coming before the council? Because the NPD doesn't go before zoning today, it goes to planning than us.
Right now, the NPDs are saying right now the NPD. So everything that, all the changes with the NPD right now go to the city council. It's the only situation like that in the city. I don't think that we're losing any protections per se because we're treating it like zoning for every other property within the city that have zones. We're not, there's not to say that there's a carte blanche with this zone. You still have development plan review, you still have the planning commission to go through for all these developments. So we're essentially treating it just like any other project, like Garden City, like anything else.
So the city's still protected?
No, we have the typical, we have the typical development pattern. Whereas this NPD is so far afield of typical, it drives us crazy.
Last question. Do you see the need for a traffic study in association with this ordinance as currently developed?
Traffic studies have been done ad nauseam for the site. Traffic improvements have been done and constructed and built for the site over many years. So for this corner, that's all completed. Thank you.
Councilman Stychos?
Just a couple of things I'd like to clarify in the comment. One question for Jason. How many NPDs are there in the city?
Off the top of my head, I believe we've done seven or eight in, within the city, at least in my time here.
There's seven or eight NPDs, so this is not the only NPD.
Right.
Okay. The second thing I'd like to point out is that while the council, this is really for members of the public, while the council did approve what I would say is blank check zoning for Garden City, that was not unanimous, but there were three of us who opposed that. And lastly, I'd like to, I think, one of the problems I have with this is that there's just too much packaged in here together. Frankly, what I'm hearing about the Historic District Commission, that makes some sense to me, the complaints that it's overly restrictive for properties that are not historic. However, the real need of this is in the uses, the use table. And I really don't know what that opens us up to that isn't there now. And I just think the signage provisions, I mean, this is a, this is a major, a major change to the top, probably the number one commercial area in our city. And I think it needs more close look. I think it probably should be divided up into pieces so that we can talk about the Historic District Commission issues and come to some kind of agreement on them and get that out of the way and then go to the other provisions, the signs and the usage and the setbacks and God knows what else is in here. So I think, I think Councilman Lanny's proposal to continue is the safe way to go and Chapel View has to wait a little longer. Well, you know, let's do this right. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, please take a roll on Councilman Lanny's amendment for a traffic study.
Councilman Lee?
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins?
No.
Councilman Stychos?
Yes.
Councilman Paul?
Yes.
Councilman Arquette?
Yes.
Councilman Fulford?
No.
Councilman Paploskas?
No.
Councilman Fadkia?
No. No. I'm in motion. Councilman Stychos, we spoke, you spoke a lot the last section. Would anyone else who wants to speak go first? And if no one else wants to speak, I will come back to you. Anyone else want to speak on the motion? All right, Councilman Stychos, you're up.
Okay, I have a amendment to offer. This would be on page 14 of the amended conditions. And I'll state the amendment, hopefully I'll get a second and then I will explain the point of it. Under E, and this has to do with the Historic District issue, it currently, this sentence starts under E1, it says, "Any future changes of the three dormitory buildings, the state chapel, the connecting buildings, the historic cemetery, and all the historic stone walls located along Route 2 and Sakonata Crossroad periphery of the site will be submitted to the Cranston Historic District Commission for approval." Okay, so this is what Mr. Coates talked about extensively. And what my amendment would be is to add after the words, "Any future changes to," and add the words, "Plat 14 Lot 1." And what that, what that would do is it would, as it's written, just these buildings and stone wall are, go to Historic District Commission. But that's really a historic corner and the area around it is important to those, to those buildings. And just to give kind of a, I mean, something could go up in the parking lot, for instance, or there could be a change in the parking lot that would drastically damage the historical impact of the buildings. So what plat 14 Lot 1 is, is it's the area around those buildings, the land around those buildings and the parking. I think it's bordered by Power Road and, what's it called, Chapel View Drive. It's that section right around the, if you took the chapel and the dormitory buildings and the stone walls and then the roads, it would make it kind of into a square. That would be, the non-building part would be plat 14 Lot 1. So that's, my amendment is to just add the words plat 14 Lot 1, and I hope someone will second it.
I'm not sure I understand it.
I'll second it for discussion. I have a motion and a second. I'm not sure what that does.
So, is it the whole site?
No. It is not.
Is it the parking lot? We want the parking lot to be part of the Historic District Commission?
Yes. The parking lot that is, I thought I had a map here, but I, it's the parking lot that it's the parking, there's Chapel View Boulevard, which is the road that comes off New London Avenue. So if I'm, I think I've got this correct, it's, so it would be bordered by, go in on Chapel View Boulevard to that first intersection, which is, I think, Power Road. And then go from Power Road to Sakonasa. And then up Sakonasa to New London. And then down New London to Chapel View. So the buildings that it would encompass are the chapel, the dormitories, and, and the historic cemetery's in there, the stone walls in there, the parking lots that are in there, the parking lots for those buildings are in there. But it does not include shaws or that whole big new mall-type building on the other side of the road, on the other side of Chapel View Boulevard, or that big parking area, or the, or the big tree, for that matter, which is covered separately in the ordinance. I'm not sure.
Any discussion? Councilman Paploskas?
I guess my concern with the, another is, is you think there's a lot of stuff in there that's not historic, like a staples and, I don't know, panero bread and all that stuff. So all of that, to go back to historic, it kind of undercuts the whole purpose of the onerous NPD the way it is now. It seems like we're putting more restrictions back on growth. So that's my only concern, I guess.
Any other discussion?
Councilman Fadkia? Yeah, I still don't really understand what this is doing. I mean, it, the Stark Commission still has authority under what Mr. Coates was talking about with regard to those three buildings, the cemetery. So we just adding, we're not adding the Shaw's, are we adding the Shaw's parking lot? No. So it doesn't, isn't that what we're already doing? I'm just trying to understand the extent of it. It doesn't go down into the vacant land where the training school was, correct? It just stops at Power Road behind, near Qdoba and Panera, right? It just covers that. I mean, doesn't seem, it doesn't seem much different than what's proposed, you know, except to add the parking lots, I guess, which, I don't know what you can do to parking lots, but, I mean, I know you can build something, but there's really no room there to build anything on that particular part.
Well, I think that we don't know that, really. I mean, you might say that now, but who knows what's going to happen there.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it really doesn't matter. To me, it doesn't matter. I don't know if Mr. Coates has any comment, but that doesn't seem to change much of anything.
If there's no other comments, I'm going to ask the clerk to take a roll.
Councilman Lee?
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins?
No.
Councilman Stychos?
Yes.
Councilman Paul?
No.
Councilman Paploskas?
No.
Councilman Fadkia?
No. No. Any further discussion on the ordinance? Councilman Stychos?
Under, on page four, in the use table, we propose to eliminate, to change retail, sale, large scale, from yes to no.
Information, isn't there a Shaw's already on the site, which is retail scale, yes, and that would... that would, Shaw's have to close tomorrow?
I believe things like that are grandfathered, but I don't...
Yeah. I don't know if that's necessarily the case. Do you have a second on that?
No.
I have no second. Amendment dies. Have you got a motion to approve the ordinance as amended? Have a motion to approve the ordinance as amended? Do you have a second?
Second.
Second. I have a second. Another discussion. Councilman Stichels.
I approve, I propose eliminating, on page four on the use table, fuel station full service, changing that from S to N.
The motions in a second. Councilman, I have a motion to approve in a second.
And I'm amending the motion, just like we always do.
My lawyer's telling me you can't do that, so I'll have him talk to you if you want.
First of all, we already made a motion, a motion was already made to approve the proposal. That's how we're discussing it. And I'm making an amendment, and the amendment, like any amendment, comes before the final passage.
He's, he's making a motion to approve. Do we have to act on motion approved first before we talk about the amendments? I'm not in a hurry. Sorry. Mr. President, I'm sorry, could you repeat it? So we had motions for amendments, both failed. Motion was made to approve as amended. Councilman with a second, councilman's trying to continue to make more amendments. Do we have to vote it up or down before we hear more amendments, or can we hear more amendments?
No, I think you, um, the motion to approve needs to be voted on.
We can discuss the motion approved.
Yes.
But we can't make more amendments to it?
No, I don't believe it's proper to make, to amend motions. You can, um, you can, you can't, you can make a motion to amend. I am not familiar with actually amending a motion once it's made. It has to be voted. If there's another motion to amend, that can be introduced, but they're separate things, I believe. I don't believe that you can amend a motion once it's been made.
No.
Now, clerk, you are up. Oh, I thought you were going to throw that some cogent theory to ask. What we really know, so make, make your motion to amend and we'll see if you have a second.
If I could just make a point here, and that is that in Robert's Rules of Order, there are, there's a, a hierarchy of motions. So you start out with a motion to approve whatever the, whatever's on the agenda. And then there's a whole hierarchy of motions. Councilman Lanny made a motion to continue. You can make motions to amend. You could make a motion to send it back to committee. You could make a tabling. All those motions have to be considered before the final passage. You, you can't say, "Oh, it's final passage and you can't make any more amendments." It's just, it's not in Robert's Rules. So I want to make an amendment, and when that amendment is, is considered, then we're back to either an amended version of the, of the ordinance, if the amendment passes, or we're back to the original ordinance if the amendment fails.
Thank you, councilman. That's why I said to make your amendment. The parliamentarian who had the objections checking his source, so I said, "Continue to make your amendment." So by all means, continue to make your amendment. Could you repeat?
Okay, my, my amendment is, on page four of the conditions, there is fuel station full service, which is, is now being proposed as a permitted use with special permit, and I'm proposing to change that special permit S to an N, meaning it would not be allowed in the, in, in this zone.
I'll second that. Have a motion in a second. Another discussion. Councilman Ficchio.
Thank you, council. President, I have a question. What, what is the definition of a fuel station? Is it, you know, just gasoline? Does it include electric charging stations? I asked, I don't know if the administration or any solicitors have any idea, but I, and I guess my point is, if you, you know, try to prevent gasoline, traditional gasoline, I understand that.
Okay, well, if you look on the chart on page four, two above fuel station full service is electrical vehicle charging station. It's a separate, separate category. I'm not proposing changing that.
I see. I have a motion in a second. And then in further discussion, clerk, please take the roll.
House of Lee?
No.
House of Hopkins?
No.
House of Stichels?
Uh, yes.
House of Paul?
Yes.
House of McHale?
Yes.
House of Colfer?
No.
House of Paploskas?
No.
House of Westwood, the Vicia?
No.
House of Paulson?
No.
House of Westwood, the Vicia?
No. Councilman Paploskas, make a motion to move the question. I have a motion to move the question, it's not debatable.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Clerk, please take the roll.
House of Lee?
Yes.
House of Hopkins?
No.
House of McHale?
No.
House of McHale?
No.
House of McHale?
No.
House of McHale?
Yes.
House of Paploskas?
Yes.
House of Westwood, the Vicia?
Yes. Yes, I have a motion to approve. Clerk, please take the roll.
House of Hopkins?
Yes.
House of Stichels?
Point of order, I would just request that on this final vote, that we just give John Lanny a second to come back and, and vote. I'm willing to go ask him to hurry up. I assume he's going to the bathroom. But I don't want to go ask him to hurry up if you're going to vote without me, so.
I have any contingent, sir, I'm going to give him a minute to come back. Councilman Lanny, while you are out, a motion was made to move the question, it passed. We are now voting on the motion to approve without debate.
Yes.
House of Lee?
Yes.
House of Hopkins?
Yes.
House of Stichels?
No.
House of Paul?
No.
House of McHale?
No.
House of Colfer?
Yes.
House of Paploskas?
Yes.
House of Westwood, the Vicia?
Yes.
House of Paploskas?
Yes.
House of Westwood, the Vicia?
Yes.
House of Paulson?
Yes.
House of Westwood, the Vicia?
Yes. Motion passes. Next time of that, we go to the Claims Committee. Councilman Colfer.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Appreciate, appreciate you coming to, I'd like to, well, the several people that are pretty few of them tonight are there for regime pleasure. I would like to talk back to you, Council President.
Thank you. Under election of city officials, Board of Canvassus, we have a Republican Committee member term to expire on March sixth, twenty twenty-three, Council, Majority Leader Paploskas. Thank you, Mr. Council President. We have a letter here presented to us by the Cranston Republican City Committee, and the first name on the list is Randy Jackvoney, so I'm making a motion to approve Randy Jackvoney.
I have motion to approve Randy Jackvoney in a second. Discussion, seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
House of Lee?
Yes.
House of Hopkins?
Yes.
House of Stichels?
Yes.
House of Paul?
Yes.
House of McHale?
Yes.
House of Paploskas?
Yes.
House of Westwood, the Vicia?
Yes.
House of Paulson?
Yes.
House of Westwood, the Vicia?
Yes.
House of Paulson?
Yes.
House of Westwood, the Vicia?
Yes.
House of Paulson?
Yes.
House of Westwood, the Vicia?
Yes. Yes, motion passes. Next time of that, we go to the Claims Committee. Councilman Colfer.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Appreciate you coming to, I'd like to, well, the several people that are pretty few of them tonight are there for regime pleasure. I would like to talk back to you, Council President.
Thank you. Under election of city officials, Board of Canvassus, we have a Republican Committee member term to expire on March sixth, twenty twenty-three, Council, Majority Leader Paploskas. Thank you, Mr. Council President. We have a letter here presented to us by the Cranston Republican City Committee, and the first name on the list is Randy Jackvoney, so I'm making a motion to approve Randy Jackvoney.
I have motion to approve Randy Jackvoney in a second. Discussion, seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
House of Lee?
Yes.
House of Hopkins?
Yes.
House of Stichels?
Yes.
House of Paul?
Yes.
House of McHale?
No.
House of McHale?
No.
House of Paploskas?
No.
House of Westwood, the Vicia?
No.
House of Paulson?
No.
House of Westwood, the Vicia?
No.
House of Paploskas?
No.
House of Westwood, the Vicia?
No.
House of Paulson?
No.
House of McHale?
No.
House of McHale?
No.
House of Westwood, the Vicia?
No.
House of Paulson?
No.
House of McHale?
No.
House of McHale?
No.
House of Westwood, the Vicia?
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 No.
House of Paulson?
No.
House of McHale?
No.
House of McHale?
No.
House of Westwood, the Vicia?
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 No.
House of Westwood, the Vicia?[1483.82]
wanna call our politics instead of doing our due diligence for our new members and giving them time to analyze and react, I have a motion, Councilman Lanning.
Five weeks recess, we'll get that resume up here in five minutes. Rather than wait two weeks or one month, the longer the cases, and it's not petty politics, it's common sense. Thank you, council president.
Councilman Paplaskas.
Through the chair, to me, what, the appointments on the zoning board, are they for the, for council, or are they, by, like, candidacy has democratic appointment, Republican appointment?
No, the appointments to the zoning board, the five standing members, uh, were appointed based on geographic locations, their residency requirements. The ultimates do not have any residency requirements, and they serve for a term of one year.
Okay, so it's not a party appointment, it's just put up?
No.
I just have a question, I just haven't seen the resume, and I don't remember seeing the resume last time.
I apologize, I thought Mr. Katon had been appointed by this council and was a reappointment, which is why I didn't send out the resume, but we do have him on file.
Okay.
And I, you know, I can, um, easily provide it, it's on my machine, if you wanna see it.
I have a motion to continue, in a second. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lanning?
No.
Councilman Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilman Spock?
Yes.
Councilman McCallum?
No.
Councilman Akel?
Yes.
Councilman McCallum?
Yes.
Councilman McRicky?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. The next one, I have board of contracts and purchases, we have two resignations, Mr. Anthony Manthea and Richard Del Sesto. I thank you for the years of service. Yes, Director.
I just wanna thank both those gentlemen for working on, uh, board of contract and purchasing. I do ask, I, I am asking both the minority party and the majority party, 'cause they're, each person is represented, each party, I, we need to have an appointment, or someone to be appointed to the board, because we're having a difficult time getting a quorum, similar to what's happened in the audit committee. So, Mr. Manthea was the majority, Mr. Del Sesto was the minority party, I would appreciate if we could have, uh, uh, for the next meeting, have someone be appointed by both parties, and, uh, that will make our lives a lot easier when we have, uh, discussions and a quorum for the board of contract and purchasing.
Director Strong, we already have, the majority party already has an appointment, we'll have it for the next council meeting. I look to the majority minority leader to come up with one from their side.
I have a recommendation this evening, just if you would like to take it.
Uh, submit it via the letter to the clerk, as is the proper channel.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Report of city officers, moving on to executive communications.
We need a request of the Deputy Service Deputy Chief Thomas Fredericks, who has been on for a month, to continue service, and they are always busy, they hold a couple of lines, so, thank you, so they are here.
Yeah, before you, the, the appointment of Deputy Chief Tom Fredericks for one year, is an unnecessary qualification, I have a motion to approve. So moved, in a second. Second, under discussion, seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lanning?
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilman Spock?
Yes.
Councilman McCallum?
Yes.
Councilman McRicky?
Yes.
Councilman Spock?
Yes.
The administration agreement, the advising consent, uh, for the appointment of Rita Lavoie as a member of the conservation commission.
Motion to approve, in a second. A motion, second, under discussion, seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lanning?
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilman Spock?
Yes.
Councilman McCallum?
Yes.
Councilman McCallum?
Yes.
Councilman Paplaskas?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Uh, as part of the communication, you have the report on hiring special legal council consultants pursuant to the charter, that is in your packet for the evening, under council president communications. We have one more in till the year is over, and will be right back in the 2018, I'd wish everyone, just in case you're not here, or see this before Christmas, or the new vote, the new post for the December meeting is on before Christmas. Merry Christmas, happy holidays, uh, spend time with your family, your loved ones, that's what it's really all about, that'll be the extent of my council president communications. Councilman McCallum, according to the lack of you, have been promoted to council president, so you get to go first.
Thank you, sir, very humbled. Uh, before we get started on the, um, on the, uh, return of the keynotes, I just wanted to quickly thank a few people after my first year in office, um, I wanted to thank the city clerk's office for their help, I wanted to thank, um, Director Musquin, Director Lopez, um, you folks do a lot of stuff behind the scenes to make us look good, and I, I just wanted to, you know, I appreciate it. Uh, Director Belong's not here, but he was also very helpful, and of course, my fellow councilman. Um, regarding the return of the Cranston keynotes, I grew up going to the park show, going to the matinees and whatnot, and we play on the keynotes afterwards, you know, so it is, it was, uh, very strong to my heart, and we watched those, and through the due diligence of the administration, um, and especially council minority leader, uh, Kettle, I just wanted to thank you folks for bringing that back to work too. Thank you, sir.
Good thinking, Councilman McCallum. Councilman Lanning?
Thank you, council president. Um, I would like to read the resolution that I'm proposing to the general assembly, because it has not been read in public, so I'm sure most people have no idea what it says, so if you allow me to read it or so, I'll read that and I'll be silent afterwards.
You can read it, unfortunately, we cannot discuss it as it is now before us, but I prefer we have a scene there, council president. Thank you, as long as we all understand.
Where is all that whereas current state law allows concealed carry permit holders to carry firearms onto school grounds, and whereas the majority of states do not permit firearm on school grounds, and whereas a study by the violence policy center, a Washington DC gun safety organization, found from May 2007 to February 2015, that in research involving 622 deaths, in 544 concealed carry shootings, in 36 states, in the District of Columbia, the vast majority of the killings were deemed non-self-defense, and only 16 cases were once ruled lawful self-defense, and whereas a two-year comprehensive final report of the Sandy Hook Advisory Commission, consisting of school administrators, teachers, law enforcement, psychiatrists, lawmakers, and legal professionals, date February 2015, made filings including safe school climate and safe school design and operation strategies. That specifically did not include the use of firearms or the arming of teachers or non-law enforcement civilians in schools. In whereas the Rhode Island Association of School Committees Executive Board have voted to support banning concealed weapons on school grounds, except for building authorized members of law enforcement, whereas the Rhode Island School Superintendent's Association has adopted the School Se- uh, Superintendent's Association, uh, Position Paper on School Safety, a response to the tragedy at Sandy Hook Elementary, which specifically denounces efforts to bring more guns into our schools by teachers and administration, administrators, and reminds us that schools remain the safest place for children, and whereas the Rhode Island Association of School Principals Executive Board has voted to endorse and support the banning concealed weapons on school grounds, except for authorized members of law enforcement, holding us, holding to its core belief that school environments should be devoid of all conditions that may compromise the safety of students and staff. Whereas legislation as to ban, uh, people, except police officers, from carrying concealed weapons in schools, has been introduced by the Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns, now therefore be it resolved that the Cranston City Council respectfully request the Rhode Island General Assembly, uh, introduce and pass legislation, legislative proposals that would prohibit non-law enforcement to carry concealed firearms onto school grounds, be it fully resolved that the city clerk forward a certified copy of this resolution to the Cranston delegation of the Rhode Island General Assembly, uh, seeking their consideration and support, sponsored by myself and Councilman Livingston, uh, Councilman Stikos. And my only further comment on that, council president, is that I believe that this is the proper step, you can carry a concealed weapon in just about any place, airplanes, federal buildings, or federal post offices, uh, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and you all know what they are. All I'm asking for is a vote. Vote it up or vote it down, but vote. Don't put your heads in the seat and say, we're gonna bury this again in committee. Give it a vote, have courage of your convictions, let people know where you stand on something. They know where I stand, but maybe knows where you stand. Thank you.
Yes, um, I have one thing that, uh, Councilman McCallum forgot, which was to ask about, um, the, uh, do we have a, a list of, of people who are willing to snowshover for seniors? Is that something that we still do, or did we abandon that, or?
Yeah, that was a school project, I don't believe, we got it off, we did it.
I just, Councilman, so, Councilman, this, we will not be aware, that was a school project that was set up by the school administration to provide an opportunity for students to complete their community service requirements, um, since that time, those requirements have been expanded to include other projects that students can do, so at this time, I don't have any problem like that, that the school is, uh, running.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Um, okay, then I had, uh, the two items on the, uh, agenda, administration report on, um, efforts to stop ATV damage, uh, in the city conservation land on Leighton Night Farm Road.
Um, I met with, I met with the West Bay Land Trust members, um, a couple of weeks back, Lisa Keenan, and we're just gonna do a combination of efforts, having sort of both of us attack, for lack of a better word, that. The city will be working with the West Bay Land Trust, we will provide all the labor to put up new signs, better signage, reminding people that those don't belong here. Uh, West Bay Land Trust will be working with, um, the local farms along there who may be using that, not so much for the horses, but for the ATVs as well, reminding them that that is not for their use. We will continue with enforcement as best as we can. We've talked about where we can put, um, boulders or something at the entrances to try to stop the ATVs, but we don't wanna do it in such a way that would preclude healthy travel on those trails. So we'll continue to work with the land trust, they're good partners in this for us, um, and as I said, the city's more willing to provide signage, which I think is a just advice reminder, that we know people are gonna avoid it, but at least it gives leverage for enforcement if we have signage up. And so we continue to work on it.
Okay, that's, that's good, I'd just like other members of the council to know that, uh, someone actually went up with a chainsaw and cut down trees on the trail, so that there was enough room for the ATVs to, uh, pass. So it's, uh, and I think it's, um, I mean, my, having been up there a lot, I would suspect that it's, uh, some local residents who, uh, live on Leighton Night Road, 'cause they're hot rodding up and down.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll continue to work with our police department on that, it's, you know, that land was, the, the point of that land was for serene enjoyment and, and protection of, of open space, so we certainly agree on, on that, Councilman.
Okay, thank you. The other, um, the other issue is an issue that, um, I know, uh, a, a project, uh, Jeff Barone was working on with historical markers, a grant, we've got a grant from the Rhode Island Foundation, and I know, uh, one was put up at, uh, uh, the Sprague Mansion, and I remember Jeff reporting that there were plans for more, and I, I just wondered where that, that was headed.
Council president?
Councilman Stikos, so, what's going on with that project right now is, uh, the additional signs are being manufactured, um, however, they're not gonna be dis- uh, displayed until the spring, for fear that the winter's just gonna damage them, so that project is kinda like slowed down, they're gonna take their time to make the signs, there's no rush, because they're not gonna get them out before the winter, but the project is still ongoing. Uh, Director Gasha from the Cranston Library is on that board, and we're gonna be replacing the Jeff Barone, uh, role in that, either myself or one of my other staffers is gonna take over and continue to work on that project.
So I think, I think you did a really good job, Ed, did the, I think there was a committee that worked on the first one, and it...
Thank you for that.
...done. Um, all right, so, uh, yeah, if you could just maybe let us know in the spring, do you have any idea how many are, and, and the locations of the ones that?
I believe, uh, there's a couple of signs going into Knightsville, uh, and beyond, but I'm not sure what the other signs are, but I, we'll have plenty of time to look into it and get back to it.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilman Lanning, I'm sure you wanna get to your own.
Uh, thank you, guys, I mean, now, I just got a follow-up question on the ATVs on Lakeford Road, uh, what are the penalties? He said, I know, he said, law enforcement, look into it, but what are the penalties for, uh, unlicensed, and they are unlicensed, vehicle operating in private property and destroying?
There's warrants, there isn't warrants on, uh, on all road vehicles, uh, and for sport, but we could have warrants on the whole.
Yeah, because, you know, it's not just there, but I, I see them in my neighborhood, I think most people see them right in the neighborhood, you know, kids riding ATVs, you know, under the age of sixteen. Councilman, if I can address that, uh, Councilman, uh, the only thing is that if the, if the ATVs are unlicensed, they can be seized by, by the authorities, by the police that respond, because by the very nature of them being unlicensed, they, uh, they operate illegally. As far as licensed, um, ATVs out there, you know, with proper registration and proper paperwork, uh, they can still be fined, with a ticket, uh, as you would with a, with a car vehicle, with a vehicle.
And with ticket, I guess speeding ticket, with paper.
I'll have to check with, uh, what the specific is, because, uh, you know, I see it so often, and I see, especially with young kids. Um, uh, we, we can look into that, Councilman, but they are proper and so, okay?
All right, I'll get you.
Thank you, Councilman.
There was a warrant that was added seven years ago, uh, about ATVs, we had discussions with, because the two councils don't...
Yeah, but I can't remember if the fine, if there was a fine.
They're very specific about our road vehicles being able to be restricted, so we can find out the details on that, and we start a judicial enforcement, particularly, um, that type of, that's their property, whether it's destroyed, not only that they bear it, not only why it's because of noise or anything else, but actually destroying it, like.
Any other councilman communications? Councilman Paplaskas?
Ladies and gentlemen, council president, as we approach the holidays, I just wanted to take a minute to invite everybody to the, uh, third annual Knightsville Decebo Christmas tree lighting, which will be Sunday, December 3rd, coming up, starts at four o'clock, it's a great family event, and if you're all free, you're all welcome, please come and enjoy.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor. Any further councilman communications? See, no, I'll close that portion of the meeting, um, introduction to new business, oop, sorry, Director Lopez?
Hi, um, to follow up on Councilman Paplaskas's invitation, um, I'd like to invite the council to be here on, uh, Tuesday, December 5th, at 6:00 PM for the traditional lighting of the city hall tree, and for the arrival of Santa, so please, uh, hope to see you here, and, uh, hope to see the kids here. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Any other new business, Madam Clerk, if you could read the business.
Proposed ordinance 11-1701, in amendment of Title 10 Code of the City of Cranston, 2005, entitled no vehicles in traffic, no parking in certain streets generally, for now against a boulevard at Hudson Sefton in Strathley, which to be referred to ordinance for hearing on December 7th. Proposed ordinance 11-1702, authorizing the city to utilize Eastern Recreation Impact Feast for Dog Park at Beachmont Field, to be referred to ordinance for hearing on December 4th. Proposed ordinance 11-1703, in amendment of Title 8A of the Code of the City of Cranston, entitled health and safety, fire prevention code for cooking fires, to be referred to ordinance for hearing on December 7th. Proposed ordinance 11-1704, in amendment of Chapter 6, related to the Code of the City of Cranston, entitled dogs and other animals, wild, and hybrid, to be referred to the ordinance committee for hearing on December 7th. Resolution urging the General Assembly to pass legislation banning bump stocks and trailer crafts, to be referred to ordinance for hearing on December 7th. Resolution urging the General Assembly to pass legislation banning guns in school, to be referred to ordinance for hearing on December 7th. Resolution urging the mayor to provide public notice of sewer cleanup services provided by the oil water, to be referred to public works for hearing on December 7th. Following property damage claims, to be referred to claims committee for hearing on December 4th. Property damage claim of Kristen Casmini from the large incident on November 7th, 2017. Following personal injury claims, Domenico Corinondo from the large incident on October 10th, 2017. Trinity Resina from the large incident on November 1st, 2017. And those, that is all the new business I have.
It's a motion to send new business to committee? So moved. Motion, the second, under discussion, seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lanning?
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilman Spock?
Yes.
Councilman McCallum?
Yes.
Councilman Paplaskas?
Yes.
Councilman McRicky?
Yes.
Councilman Spock?
Yes.
Councilman Lanning?
Yeah, council president, you forgot my name on the council communications, um, an administrative report on legal costs to date on road license solicitation, but, uh, would you please, should we take a minute? You know, I was surprised you let that go, and asked if you wanted to talk about your second matter, and you asked about ATVs, but, no, no, well, I got carried away. Ah, hey.
You're off route.
You're off route.
Councilman Lanning, on the, um, on the legal submission of bills expenses for this month, if you go to page five or 10 on the, uh, Attorney Del Sesto, there's, uh, amount paid for pain healing this year, I assume that's what you were referring to, it's 11,800 round the off right now.
All right, and that's just for this month, am I correct?
Well, uh, no, actually...
I was looking for the total.
That's, that's to date, I believe, 'cause it says from, they paid 921, so it wasn't for this month. I don't think there's been any other additional bills.
So that's the total in this time?
So far, yes.
All right, thank you.
If, if you like, I can keep you, uh, posted if there's any additional bills next month.
All right, I appreciate that. Thank you. Yep.
The door for the, uh, habits come for the meeting?
Wait, Council, Council president, just point of information, do you, did you want to clean up the, the issue of the Roger Williams Park?
Thank you, Councilor. I've received a letter from Mayor Roldo within the last seven months, the question, I think it's time we get moving, assuming I'm not looking here for him. So we can move that, and the end of our, um, the next regular scheduled conference and council meeting will be December?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth, probably evening, seven o'clock, right here. I'm not on any motion to adjourn.
Sorry.
We should adjourn.
Okay, we are adjourned.